You are watching Access to Port County, Channel 97. Coming up next is the July 30th meeting of the Michigan City Common Council Mayor Workshop. You can find more information for this meeting at www.accesstoportcounty.org.
I'm good.
I'm good.
All right, this word of talk is primarily for our council. We're going to go ahead and get started. We're just going to start at 6:20, 6:19. This is going to be very enlightening for all of you. Even for us who've been on the council, you're going to be shocked by a few things. We want to make sure that we provide you all the information you need. And that we have some transparency and what has been shared. So especially as we get ready to go into this 2025 budget cycle.
Angie?
Yes.
Yeah. After 12 years, nothing can shock me anymore.
Oh, yes. This is going to shock.
All right.
So.
For a little excitement.
Yes, this is going to be shocking. So the reason I wanted to get you all together is to kind of give you an overview of our riverboat fund and the ordinance 4558. And just to give you a little bit of history, ordinance 4558, and it's in your packet. I gave you a lot of information. 4558 was passed by the last city council. And it was to put some parameters around riverboat spending. And when in fact, we have not followed any of those rules. And also to note that when I was on the council back in 2008 to 2011, our council back then also established some rules to restrict how we use riverboats so that we could possibly save or do more capital projects. So we're going to discuss ordinance 4558, the budget by ordinance, and then the actual budget that we, and this is strictly the riverboat funds we're talking about. Because one of the things that we discussed is we would like to do more projects. We would like to do all these different things, use riverboat money for capital projects, et cetera. So this ordinance, it basically scaled down how we use the riverboat. 25% to the general fund operating expenditures in 2022, then 20% in 2023, and then 15% 2024. And that we will put 25% of the riverboat funds into the rainy day fund until we reach $6 million. And then the remainder of the funds will be spent for capital expenditures. So if you base that on today, about 15%, we should have about 60% for capital expenditures, right? If you do your math right. But this is where we're at. So this is the ordinance 4558. So when you look at us, we're going to start with 2022, 2023, and 2024. What has been projected as revenues for 2022 was 9.3 million. We received 8.5 million. Last year, we projected 9.6, almost 9.7 million dollars in revenues, but we only received 8.1 million from the riverboat. And year-to-date, right now, we've only received 27% of our projected revenue today. Okay? I hope that shocked you for everybody.
Yeah.
So transfers based on ordinance 4558, it says that based on the ordinance that was passed, we should have only used 2.3 million in 2022, 1.9 in 2023, and 1.4. These are our actual transfers that were approved in the budget. Okay? So that's, that's a problem, right? So one of the things that I wanted to talk about a little bit is our budget performance. There is a packet, I want to make sure I don't have it, so I'll make sure. The pre-COVID and the post-COVID. Let me see your pre-COVID, post-COVID. I can speak to it. It's this. So you all have a pre-COVID sheet and a post-COVID sheet. This didn't start in the last administration. So the way you read this, I want you to take this one that says pre-COVID and post-COVID. Yeah, riverboat, pre-COVID, and then there's one that's post-COVID. I want to make sure that everybody understands. So look at the pre-COVID sheet first. You should have a pre-COVID. It's unbroken.
After.
Did I give you two afters?
After.
So we didn't get COVID. Okay, I might have to make the packet. So I'll read it so that I can make sure.
Should it say pre or should it say after?
You should have one that's pre and one that's after. I thought I separated them right. I must have messed up more. You got a pre and a post?
Yes.
Okay, you got a pre and a post? I messed up there.
Not pre, but after.
Well, the lady goes on pretty much.
Well, I had to go. I took yours. So, so pre-COVID, so I'm going to go back to 2016, 2017, 2018, and 2019. And what we found is that I can give you our revenue from riverboat in 2016, for instance. So you can turn to page 202. So turn to the back, turn to the back of pre-COVID. Look at the bottom. And at 2016, you will see that the revenues that we brought in for the riverboat was $9,994,000, but we spent $15 million of riverboat. If you go to the next year, we had, we brought in $10 million in revenues, and we spent 9.6 million. You can see in 2018, we brought in $9 million in riverboat, but we spent 10 million. And then in 2019, we brought in 9.6 million, and we spent 13. So we ate about $10 million plus of our reserves of riverboat in a four-year period prior to the last administration. Okay? $10 million, gone. Bunch of transfers, bunch of transfers, bunch of transfers. We'll just get it from the riverboat. We'll just get it from the riverboat. Ate all that money up, $10 million of reserves. So then we come into the last four years and COVID. Now, post-COVID, if you look at the back page, in the last administration, we only ate into about $1 million of the reserves in the last four years because there was no reserve to eat out of. Okay? Just want to make that note. So all this time, we were increasing pays and doing all these extra things. We really didn't have the money, right? So we've eaten into that. So your riverboat budget performance actual basically shows just that. So this is 2022. We brought in, in our riverboat fund, because now we have a rainy day fund, we brought in about 6.4 million, and we spent about 6.3 in 2023. We had 6.1, and we spent 7 million. And now our actuals for 2024, 2.6 is what we have set. And then the expenses about 1.8, but we already know we have a shortfall. So we'll talk a little bit about that. Rainy day, same thing. We can put money in the rainy day fund. We do have some inconferences against it. So 2022, 2.1 million, 2023, 2 million. And then the actual amount year-to-date is 882,000 that we put in there for this year. So the reason why I wanted to share this with you is because, first of all, we have not followed the ordinance since we put it in place. And there really is no way to follow based on what we approved. We're kind of handcuffed to the budget that we have. And one of the things that we had, we didn't, and I guess we could share, let me go back, is that we've been projecting, overprojecting our riverboat for the last four years. We have never received the money that was put in our budget. We projected not over 9 point something million each year, and each year has gone down. We, we have received, we haven't gone over 9 million in the last couple of years. And we're projected out to use $10 million, and we have only received 8 point something million. Okay? And the other one that I haven't even put a slide together for is the Boyd Development Fund. The Boyd Development Fund is the fund where the enrichment corporation, the zoo, everybody gets their money, and then the city gets their piece of it after that. And typically, historically, we've always gotten, we've always received about 450 to about a million dollars. The last several years, we budgeted 450,000, and we have only received 50,000. Okay? But I want to make sure everybody's clear, this is where we're at. You know, this is what it is. This is transparent. I want to make sure you all understand that, especially as we go into the budget, the budget cycle.
Mayor Angie, can I make a comment for all of us who are new?
Yeah.
Can somebody do a presentation one day? What are all the sources of revenue that the city gets? It's not just the riverboat, everything.
We did that, we'll do it again. We did that at the one meeting. We'll do it again as we do the budget.
And then what are all our expenses?
We have that too.
Yeah, I think we need to. And before we do the budget, I think we, sessions, I think we need to have that one session again. That way we have here understanding what are our sources of revenue, what are our expenses? What are we using the riverboat funds for right now? And I think we need to also, are we using it for general expenses? Are we using it for capital expenses, one-time expenses, recurring expenses?
I'm not going to do that, but I will say that in your budget books, we can teach you how to read your budget books. Because that's that 500 pages or whatever, so we know we walk book line by line. But I will say that they are in buckets. They are in buckets. I'm missing some, some of my, the slides I thought I had. So that's why I was like, I had a couple more slides. Let me pull up some different versions. Because I wanted you to see this. I got, I have so many different versions, so I want to make sure that you see, see something else there. This is what I didn't have in the other one. So I wanted to make sure that you saw, this is what we spent. Percentage of the riverboat that was spent in the budget. This has nothing to do, this is transfers, just to cover our expenses. Right? So this is.
Excuse me.
Yes.
Do you have an example of an expense that might have been covered from one of those?
Salaries. 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 We keep, we've increased salaries every year. We spent 100% of the public safety law we just passed. We were told that we had enough money to cover all these increases. We continue doing the increases, and we're not following anything that we said we're going to follow. That's the biggest expense. Biggest expense is salaries.
And that's reoccurring, I would assume?
Yeah.
Yes.
Every time you raise.
Every year, yes.
Yes.
Mayor? Yeah, and if I may, being on the city council, when the mayor's saying, we've been told, we were told, we were told all this information by the city controller. She's the one telling us, yeah, these are the monies we have, these are the funds we have, this is a balanced budget, because every year we got to send a balanced budget out to the state. Okay? So that's where the information, that's where the council gathers their information from the city controller's office.
So would y'all have known that, you know, that increasing salaries would have put y'all in this predicament?
It depends on how it's presented to you.
Yeah, well, how they tell you.
Yes, it depends on how it's presented to you unless you're really in, you know, yes.
And, and just for clarity, under new administration, this is not the new administration. Under prior administration, I served as the city finance chair under the prior administration. And prior to budget hearings and during our budget hearings, these set specific questions were asked. For example, are these projected figures or not? We were told they don't do a projection. So based off of the information that is given to us, and when certain information is limited to the finance committee and the council, our hands are tied. So we have to take it at face value for what they put in front, what the controller put in front of us.
And let me add, though, let me add, though, that. I think we start really truly understanding and asking the right questions in the last two budget cycles, but I still, we still didn't follow the ordinance that we put in place restricting how much we spent. And I will say that, but what I'm saying is, you don't have to ask if I'm going to share this with you. You ain't got to worry about me not sharing it. This is what it is. That's what we're meeting today. Because this is what I'm seeing. We're not following the ordinance, and I can't follow the ordinance if we're going to keep all city services. You know, I'm looking for revenue. I'm looking for ways to generate revenue, and I'll talk about that a little bit. But this is where we're at with ordinance 4558 specifically. The reason why I bring this up is because I'm going to ask you to repeal this ordinance so that we're not, we're not in jeopardy. Because we're not, we're not meeting any of the requirements. I mean. Yes, Mr. Andrew.
I get what all the figures are telling us, and these, the 52, 51, 61 should have been 20, 2015, whatever. The one I, one bit of information I don't have, what's the history 22, 23 with Boyd on when we get our revenues from them? Because if we're only at 27% of what we projected, when do we get the rest of that?
I think some of it might be a nature of everything's not been posted yet. We get, we do get wagering every month from Luchet. And I do believe that because of it's, everybody, this is a busy time for the city and for the park and everybody to give in our receipts. I have a feeling that the June distributions have not been posted to the ledger. Mayor Angie, we're running things off of our ledger.
Yeah.
And we don't have all of our June receipts in our ledger yet. So I do believe we're missing probably the June distribution of wager because we receive about every, every month. And then we receive admissions tax every.
But, but one thing I will say, and even if it's more, right? We know it's going to be not 10 million, it's going to be 8 million, right? So no matter what, we're short.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely.
That's the gist of it, regardless of the percentage. The gist of it is we're going to be short.
But it's going to be ashore if we keep on getting 27% of what?
It might be 2 million, which is, yeah, still a good chunk.
Well, if they do one, if they do every month, you get part, and then quarterly with the other, then we don't have the June, then we only have one quarter of a year.
Of the admissions, of the admissions. Just the admission side. We have two, we have part of them comes wagering, other parts is the admissions, is the people that actually go through, go each of them.
That's the people that go through the turnstile.
Yes, yes, when they out of there.
But the technical piece of it is not really what I was trying to get to. I want, we don't be short $2 million. That's what I, right? We can all agree on that.
To date or for the year? To date or for the?
For the year, in the riverboat. So again, that, this is kind of where we're at. We projected, like I said, 9.3 in 2022, 8.5, I kind of went over that. The other thing is, so I did give you a copy of 4558. I know Attorney McCain sent it to you. But I also put together, she's put together a draft ordinance to repeal 4558, and I am looking for sponsors to get that on the next agenda. So if you could reach out to her. But we did hire Baker Tilly to help us with the 25 budget. And we've also hired them to help us with projecting the next four years. So it's not like we're going to go in this blind this time. We're going to try to do the right thing and projecting good budget with recommendations from a firm that does this for other municipalities. We should have done this a long time ago. So number one, we have to find the revenue.
Mayor, in the past, have we used like a financial firm like Baker Tilly to help us?
No. No. So when I went to, when I went to mayor's school last year, that's, when I came back, I was like, we got to do this. Because they do this, this is what they do on a regular basis. We hired them for things, but never for financial guidance and support. Like right now, they're going through all our, our stuff. Our report is due today or tomorrow.
No, it's due tomorrow.
It's due tomorrow. But they, they went through all of our stuff, and they gave us recommendations on things that we need to change. So right now, they're in the midst of that. Now they're about to help us with our 2025 budget. And then once we get through that budget cycle, they're going to help forecast for our next four years so that we can have a good plan, especially for capital expenditure. So, so that's the goal, is to not just blindly do it, but to have someone who comes in and looks at what we have, what we've been receiving, what the trends are, and then we can project based on that, not just me giving you a budget. Again, the expenses budgeted against were overprojected. And then we're just, we're using their recommendations. So now let me go back to the other one. I guess I had too many, too many PowerPoints of the same thing out there. I don't know which one is which. Let me see if this is the right one with the recommendations. Yes. So next stepwise. Start from the beginning. First thing I need to get done is to repeal 4558. We've already, we haven't followed it since we passed it. We passed it in the fall of 2020 and have never met the guidelines of that ordinance. The other thing I wanted to bring up so that you got, you are all aware, our August council meeting, we will have a needed EFT. And I said this is kind of weird, so I'm going to state it differently than what you got. So in our budget, we did budget these transfers, but we're not going to transfer all that money. We're only going to transfer what we need to cover the basics. So I think our, the total amount for the transfer for this year is how much? I don't even know, Mary Lynn.
I thought it was five.
It's like 5 point something million. I think for the, for the next council meeting, we're just going to transfer what we need right now to cover our, cover our budget. I think it's maybe about.
Maybe about two, plus there's, and then we'll be evaluating as revenues come in. Because before, we would always just do all the operating transfers in June.
And I don't want to.
Whether or not we're around, we're looking at Park. We don't believe I'm talking to Shannon. I don't think Parks, Parks doing well.
Yes.
Park raised their, raised their parking. They were budgeted to get 350,000 in revenue for riverboat. So is Gulf. Gulf is doing well.
Yeah.
Unfortunately, Park is also very weather related. You know, if all of a sudden weather was sunk and maybe parking revenues wouldn't come in, they might have eaten that transfer. So if we don't, if we don't make this transfer, and I don't anticipate making it, that will just stay in the riverboat balance.
So our goal is not to transfer the money just for the sake of transferring it. We're only going to transfer what we need. So our riverboat transfer for the budget says it's 5 point something million. We're only going to do a transfer of only two and then reevaluate in a few months versus just doing it for the sake of doing it. So that will be on, in August, in next, next council meeting. Yes.
You're going to get one transfer? I'm just on the asking because why not wait until the budget all comes in and then transfer?
Because we got expenses to cover. So typically, what would happen in June, whenever we passed, the council passed, the controller's office, we transfer all that money over from the riverboat. And I'm like, no, let's not, let's not do that. If we don't need it, that's not transferred. We're only transferring what we need. So when you see the transfer, it's only going to be like 2 point something million versus the 5. And then we'll reevaluate in a couple of months. If we need it, we'll do it. But if we don't have to transfer any riverboat, we won't. That's the goal, not to do it if we don't have to. So again, I talked about Baker Tilly. We'll continue to seek additional revenue streams. Mark your calendar for September 5th. We're going to have our rate and fee study workshop. Baker Tilly has done a rate and fee study of all of the fees that we have in the city of Michigan City that go back, some go back to the 70s that have never been changed. 70s, 80s. And so we've just been giving services away. And then people say, well, they're a part of my taxes. Technically, so, so one of the things that we've been doing is working on that. I actually have a, one thing that we didn't do, we didn't include refuse. I actually have an intern working on that project right now, looking at all the neighboring cities. I met with a former mayor of Warsaw this morning because they have a great refuse ordinance. And, you know, he says, look, we don't pick up contract, contractor materials. They charge, you know, a monthly fee on top of the tax. He said, there is not enough money to cover the services of refuse. And I think people are not understanding the cost. Just like I said, we are on track to increase our landfill costs by over 25% over the last year. Okay? So, or more. And then again, the expectation is we pick up everything. And so we, we have to really evaluate what that looks like. Yes, we receive grants to get gravel trust, which will be a help, but we won't get those until the end of next year or 2026. Right? So we have to make sure that, you know, people are, I had one today, and I had to tell them. Because we're, I mean, a citizen called, they're calling. I said, well, we put 100 pound, whatever, whatever. And I said, look, who's supposed to pick that up? I said, this department has more work than comp issues than anybody, but you expect them to pick it up? Well, they did it before. I said, well, that was before, this is now. I said, we're going to do it this time, but I just want you to understand in the future, we won't pick this up. I said, it's unacceptable. We can't pick up contractor material and, and all this stuff, right? Did you have a question?
Yeah, is the workshop the fifth or the fourth?
What does she have in her email?
The fourth.
Well, whatever.
Okay. I'm just being fair.
She told me the fifth, so I'll double check. That's what she said when she talked to me. So we'll, we'll confirm that we got time. She's going to send a note soon. So we'll cover, and what we decided to do with the rate and fee study is one ordinance, and we list out all the previous ordinances that the fees cover. So it's exhaustive. So we need to do a workshop so that we can cover that with you all and make sure that we're doing that. The other thing that Baker Tilly said, share it with us, and it's in your packet, is they did talk about the real tax that would provide additional, and a lot of the surrounding municipalities are already doing it. And it's in your, let me see which packet. It looks like this. Looks like this. For you to take home, because I want to make sure that I got that in front of you. That has to be done by a certain time period each year. But again. Um, but again, as we continue to, um, do more streets and, and, and continue our paving, paving cycle, but also, um, you think about M V H, our street department, cover their salaries. That all comes from M V H and those things. I don't think people realize that. And we this year may have to do a transfer to cover their, to cover their costs. So, um, but the will taxes is done through B M B. Um, you can look it up. Tons of city, I think even the county has it already. So, um, it's just an additional way for us to generate revenue to continue our paving and making sure that, um, our street department is, um, supported. Uh, the Q, the Q and C capital development file, there's really nothing we have to do to get an additional like eighty, ninety thousand dollars. Baker Tilly goes in, does a recapitulation of our assessments and voila, we get this money. We've been missing out on it. All they got, all they got to do is fill out the paperwork and submit it and we get it every year. So think about all the, these are opportunities that have been missed. So, um, I wanted to make sure that, um, you had that information, um, handy. Um, and then what we really should be doing is utilizing the riverboat to leverage.
Grants.
Grants and, and different things and infrastructure. So we'll continue to do that. Um, and then our twenty twenty, um, five budget preparations, I know, um, councilwoman Tellman is working through that. Um, and then for our budget prep, um, we're going to provide conservative revenue projections. We'll have to live, you know, within our means. Um, we know that the riverboat is continuing to decrease. White development is what it is. Uh, one thing that we're not going to do anymore is include, um, large projects that permit fees in our budget. Um, we'll, um, be very conservative and create maybe only twenty five percent of that. And we won't include it in our budget unless an agreement is signed. We're in a situation right now. And, um, permits, um, we project those and we over project them. So, so I know that we passed five hundred thousand, seven hundred fifty thousand dollars, um, in our ARPA funds. We may have to pull some of that money back into that stock. I just want to let y'all know that, um, for some of the things we might need to get done. Um, our projected expenses for next year, medical costs, we've been under projecting medical costs. So, um, we're going to decrease that to probably about twenty thousand dollars per employee.
What is it now? Nineteen.
Is that what the work?
No, that doesn't.
Cause before we had fifteen thousand.
Yeah, fifteen thousand for the longest time, then it went up.
To nineteen. So, so probably twenty one thousand then. It's probably going to go up by twenty one thousand to twenty one thousand. And then we're still under police and fire negotiations that have to happen this year. Right? And then if we're going to do salary increases and then any capital. So voila, that's it. That's all I got for you. Any questions?
Yeah, I, I got a couple of comments, uh, Mayor. And I'm glad you brought up ARPA funding, okay? And the two point five million dollars that we have left, we all voted to put it in five different buckets. Okay? But, um, from what I have observed, and this is the last time we're going to get a bundle of money that we, we got sixteen million dollars from the federal government, which we never got before. We were able to buy a lot of cap, uh, a lot of equipment for the city. If we would have got that money, I don't know what kind of shape the city would be in right now.
Agreed.
Yeah. So I think we need to take a look at all those buckets and really seriously look at equipment that still needs to be purchased for the city before the end of the year. And focus on that rather than, and I know there's a lot of projects I'd like to see done. And I know the big thing for me is equipment, trucks, uh, things like that.
Let me, let me add something to that. So I still believe that we need to do, uh, I am looking at dollars for, um, so rehabilitation projects for neighborhoods. Let me say this about equipment. And I'm okay with equipment, but I will say we had in pre, previously done a poor job of maintaining, some of the departments have not done what they're supposed to do. So I'm not an advocate necessarily buying equipment unless they help me find a match for the money, for the equipment. If they come up with a way to offset costs and I'm telling my, I've been telling my department has that, okay, we can do it. But, um, because of what some of these departments have done previously, I'm not a stickler for that. So what I will do is come up with a list of priorities and then present it to y'all. Because, um, I'm not one for, like, for instance, they came to us, oh my God, we need these garbage trucks, remember? We spent all that money on those garbage trucks and nobody could drive for a whole year and a half. So I, they come, they come talking about what they need, unless you show me how you need it. So, yeah.
I just want to add too, so we get the six, the one point six million, but we're limited on what we can spend on equipment and just general, um, city services. We're, we're capped at ten million and we really have to, especially this last after some Baker Tilly suggestions and we're having to shift some monies around. We may have to look at this last allocation and make sure we're hitting all of our targeted areas. So we may have to make sure we are spending the six point something million dollars on
The right thing.
Um, targeted areas. So we got to make sure we got all that right. Otherwise, we may have to do, we don't want to be in a situation.
I, I'm just glad we hired them because they came back with, you need to move this, this shouldn't be in this bucket. You should probably change this and stuff. Yeah, she was going crazy. But she got through it. Um, but, uh, we'll, we'll make those changes as we need to. And then, um, like I said, we're going to come up with a list of priorities.
Okay, then my, my question is, so with the riverboat money and the money that Tracy talks about there at every meeting, you know, how much money is in the riverboat budget? That's a true hard fast number that that's what the city, the nine million dollars, that's what the city has.
About that today.
Every council meeting Brian Dabby has mentioned, and we're going to, and I was going to mention this and I was in our finance committee meeting. I, we're going to give you two separate numbers. So we're going to give you the cash balance, which is the cash balance on our ledger. I can click a box to say that the number drastically goes lower and mark encumberment to include encumbrances. What that means is any monies that we've obligated to buy the police cars, to buy whatever, then that subtracts that to give you your
True, true.
Cash balance.
And, and what's important for that.
Time to change that, you'll see that in the next.
And I said, because we need to know that, because that's where, we, we never knew that, right?
Right.
So for instance, at the end of last year, this is where we got into a situation. So at the end of the year, all of a sudden they're putting P O's and doing all this stuff and we got this cash balance. We were negative. We were negative at the end of last year. So we had to pull back two point five million dollars for the annexation because we would have went negative couple millions. Right? And so what you're going to start seeing from us is you're going to get your riverboat, your ledger minus anything that's encumbered for the year. So you'll see if it's negative and as money comes in, it'll, it'll grow. But you need to know the true number, the true number. So I'm not going to come to you and ask for a transfer unless you need it. I want you to be able to see it in real time though.
So right now we're at one point six million. So without the encumber, it's less than.
It's probably minus.
It's four, no, it was. I tried to give us four. Yeah.
It's like four hundred and something thousand dollars.
Yeah, that's like four million. I think, I think it's po, it'll, it'll be positive. And the reason why it'll be positive also is because we put a stop on cash.
I'm a.
All these, all these departments had to like, well, I budgeted, I mean, I can give you an example.
I told them, I don't care what you budget.
I budgeted for this truck. I want to go out and order this truck, not the.
I said, no, you can't order.
So we're very limited on what we, what we have in covered on here. So I think it will be a positive.
So we stopped capital spending, but there's a few things that, um, we've had to, um, there's certain things that we have to do that were obligated, especially with certain grants. Um, um, I know we're doing, um, C C and G and there's, uh, some alternates in there that we're working through that we want to get done. So we'll prioritize those as they come. Um, but I told, I told the departments, we'll wait till September to reevaluate what we can or cannot do. It's just what it is, I said. Until then, we'll wait, let's see where we're at. Um, the goal is to know where we're at, um, specifically around ARPA, September, there's some money that may come back. And then we can evaluate if we need to get a street sweeper or whatever we need to get. So, um, we're, we're monitoring it. I would tell you, I take, my budget book is with me every day. It goes home with me. So, um, this is something that we look at. And, uh, I learn more in the first, in the first two months in dealing with sanitary tube than I probably learned in any accounting class I've ever had. So, um, but I, I want you all to be aware that your budget book is the bible. And if you need to, you know, get some time coming here during the day or whatever, to go through some things to understand it, um, we can do that as well because it's a lot, it took some of us four years, some of us eight years. I didn't even, my first four years didn't even understand all this. And, and, you know, it's, it's what it is, it takes time. Yes, Scott?
Um, hello, Scott Mountain to our current place in the Gilman, you know? I'd like to say to the citizens, I find this very encouraging, the council is meeting with the mayor to talk about these things. It seems based on a ten million shortage on a previous administration and more negative in the next administration that this kind of thing wasn't done. So I find this encouraging that we're all doing this and I thank Mayor Angie for it. Um, I know you have the Baker Tilly study coming up for proposed fee, a fee schedule. And y'all know you're going to be in a hurricane of pain when you knock things like wheel tax. We can't even agree about what we can throw in the garbage, so look out alone. To that point, I think there, your city departments also are going to have to suffer some pain. And not necessarily head comp reduction, although we could lose one or two for a department that right as well. Is there a copay with the health insurance? I know the city side is twenty thousand. For my wife's family, she and I, um, the company pays twenty four thousand, but we still pay about six thousand ourselves. So I don't know how, how our plan is.
Yeah, we, we evaluate those. I could tell you that, that's probably been one of, that's a hard, not to craft on that one. Our biggest expense is, um, truly, um, is, is our salaries and all of that. So, um, now we have a department or two that have open positions, I'm not letting them fill. Um, I'm hoping that, um, technology, that's the thing, we're in this growing pain. When it's all happening at the same time, it's happening fast, but you know, they're looking at how long it's been taken. But I'm like, look, we've been here seven months. You guys can give me a little bit more time to get it done. But, um, so we are very cognizant of how we're hiring and who we're hiring. I just, it's taking a little bit of time, a little bit more time.
My suggestion is the pain's going to be shared between citizens and maybe and not just from, um, not just for like a copay, but like each department, do we have an inventory of their vehicles?
Now we do. Now we do.
Oh, great, that's fair.
So, but we didn't. Um, so like one of the things that we're doing, uh, we're cleaning out our, I call it the bone yard. And, um, so what we're doing there is like, we're giving like four, we're taking fourteen vehicles and, you know, moving those out, getting money for them and we're starting to do those. Uh, we did that, uh, with, um, some refuse trucks. Um, so we have an inventory of everything now, but we didn't before.
I'm just suggesting each department's going to have, I think, though.
Yeah, I agree.
Yes.
And I don't want us to get into starting to negotiate our budget here. This is low hanging fruit. They understand, uh, what we have to do in terms of salaries and everything like that. But I really don't want this to turn into what we're trying to negotiate our budget, uh, right now in terms of insurance copays. These are all things that our, our staff is going to be looking into. So let's not keep us here to ten o'clock time.
Oh, no, we're, we're not going to be here. Um, we haven't even been here forty minutes yet. We're not going to be here much longer. Yes, yes.
Mary Angie, this is thinking outside of the box, which is something that I always do. And I would think that our agreement with void gaming is probably the original agreement that was put into place. So what's the possibility of going back to them? Because I know they have the sports gambling now. Um, things have changed in their casino in the way that they're, um, bringing in revenue. So is that a possibility to go to them and, um, talk and negotiate?
Unless, um, this is state, um, along this, this is state legislation. Um, I do belong to, um, association or, or virtual of mayors that have gambling casinos. And, um, there are lobbyists who, um, yeah, they've been knocking on my door, but I'm like, you know, it will cost us money. It is, it's a legislative, state legislative thing. So everybody's fighting for their piece of the pie. Um, so our original one, um, there are triggers in that. Um, but I will say Bootchip has done a good job of diversifying their revenues. It's just not helping us.
Right.
Right? So I tell people, don't go to Four Winds, go to Bootchip. No. But, but again, it's, um, it's, it's one of those things that, um, it requires some political capital downstate
Okay.
to do. It's not something that.
It's not a quick fix, it's going to be a long term.
Yeah.
Goal.
It will.
Okay.
I agree with, with Don, we need to look at ARPA because that's, that's a big bucket. And we don't have a whole lot of things worth that we can look at other than the fees that you presented. And I agree with that, we need to do that as well. And I've worked with a lot of mayors and no one had the courage to do what you're doing. And so I give you a lot of credit for that. Yours is going to get a lot of heat. We all have to take some of that as well. And I guess, you know, no is not, no is not a forelet word. We can use it in public, in, in public and in light company. And we're all going to say no a lot to get this back into control. Cause other mayors have just blown smoke.
Well, and this is the thing, if we're going to do it, we need to do it now because we inherited this. This is not something we caused. This is not something we did. This is something that I'm trying to be very open and frank about and honest about. We inherited this, now we have to fix it. And in order to fix it and for us to provide better services and to still, you know, pave roads and to beef up our permits and do all these different things and making sure we have people in the right departments, we have to do this now. I mean, this is the time that we got to get it done if we're going to do it. And, um, we're going, I'm going through this with the sanitary district too, at the same time in parallel. So I just need to make sure that everybody, I want you all to know what's happening. Um, so when I'm asking for things, I'm not asking for things, like one of the things I know I have to have is a director of public works. I know that. Um, but I got to figure out how I'm going to do that, right? So I, um, when I, you know, people say, well, you know, it seems like things are going great. Yeah, it's a struggle and behind closed doors. But I'm trying to make sure that we present you with the best information that, that is possible, that you understand. Um, and that the department is understand why, unlike no capital, no this. Right now we're operating this way and this is what we're doing. This is how we're going to do it. And, you know, with the street department, like we know we need to transfer because of the snowstorm. You know, the snowstorm, I took us out, man. I mean, we spent a lot of money during that six week period to recover. So we're not going to get the riverboat money. We're not getting certain fee, permit fees. We're not getting, and we over projected. So that's why, you know, I'm not spending capital right now. So, um, again, I hope this was helpful. Yes, Dr. Bo.
Yeah, I'm going to be a co-sponsor for repealing this ordinance. Um, but, um, you know, when we do that, maybe a brief presentation about where we are as a city in terms of our finances. in terms of finances before we repeal the ordinance. I think it will be a good way of educating everybody as to where we are and how we need to get out of this.
Yeah, and it has to go through three readings. And I think that that's why I definitely want to do the workshop because people can watch this and have the information. I'll share in the presentation because it's harder at the city council meeting. It ju, it just will be. Yes, Mr. Dennis?
There are bad mistakes and there are good mistakes. This was a good mistake for me. I was coming here for another meeting. I was able to follow quite a bit of what you all were talking about, but what I did, I appreciate that. I too try to congratulate our mayor as much as possible, certainly in terms of her ability to count. And actually I have thrown it to her face that because she can count as well as she does, it helps us to understand how much we count. How much we count. Because of her ability to count, less likely we would be counting out. And I want to express my appreciation for that. Although I, I, if you could share with me that five point something million that you were talking about and, and you transfer a part of it, what's the benefit in leaving the rest we're using right now?
So typically what happens is each budget year, so we call it, we used to call it a bu, a balanced budget. I'm sorry. So to cover, to balance the budget, basically we would take riverboat transfers to different departments. And we just cover their expenses by transferring this money in the tune of five point something million dollars. Well, we would do it in June, no matter what. Right now, my suggestion, what we're doing, because we know we have shortfalls, we're only transferring what we need. And if we need more layers, we'll transfer more of the five point whatever. But in the meantime, I don't want to transfer that money if we don't have to use it. So certain departments are coming in better. That we're requiring maybe three or four hundred thousand, their numbers are coming in better where we may not have to transfer any money. So why transfer? Leave it in the riverboat fund. So that's what we're doing. Instead of just every June, we're just going to transfer the money. No, we're going to transfer what we need. And if we need more, we'll come back to the council and transfer more. But I'm trying not to use it, is what I'm saying. Except
Yeah, because in general, if they come in for a transfer, they know they're going to get this money. And they're just going to spend it.
Go spend the money.
They would spend the money.
And that's what usually what happened. We would make all the transfers and then each department, wow, I got all this money. And I'm telling them, you don't have this money. Because what they're doing is looking at your budget and it's projected, was overprojected, so you just get some business money. And that's what they done. All right, thank you, everybody.
All right.